We pulled out all the stuff that we had given you before.
I'm really upset about it. I really am upset about it.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 14, 2017, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by Western TV Digital Media. It'll be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is the consent agenda. These are items where the petitioner is requesting a withdrawal or continuance, items where staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to a specific use of the property. For special use zoning, however, you must be very specific about how the site will be designed and the use or uses proposed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval either by the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today will go to those bodies for their consideration. If you're addressing the board, before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business, approval of the minutes of the November 9 and 27 meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not? Is there a motion?
No approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Younger in discussion. Those in favor? The opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now calling Aaron King for a consent agenda.
All right. First item is Item B1, and this is zoning docket F-1571. This is a request to rezone about nine acres from AG to general business, special use zoning in a CEDA. This is out on Union Cross Road. We did get a request from the petitioner right before the meeting to continue this item for one month. We had a neighbor here that is also agreeable to that one-month continuance, so staff would recommend approval, would recommend a continuance for one month on this case.
Glad you did not make the deadline automatic continuous, so the board will have to approve that. Is there a motion for the continuance?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lamb. A discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is Item B2. It's zoning docket W-3354. This is a request to rezone about four and a half acres from residential multifamily, 12 units per acre, special use zoning, to institutional and public limited use zoning. And you can see the site there at the southwest corner of Bethaba Road and Speeesh Road with the two existing structures on it. The zoning pattern in the area consists of some multifamily there to the northwest, RM18 zoning, and the balance of the area is single-family homes zoned RS9 and RS12. Again, this is for IPL zoning, for church uses, school and daycare uses. The area plan does recommend institutional zoning for this piece of property, and the applicant has agreed to a condition for no electronic message board sign since it isn't a residential area, and that's consistent with previous cases. So based on that, staff would recommend approval of this limited use request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. The public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Younger.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I just want a clarification. Does a church require to have any zoning change on this?
Well, the issue is, is it's special use zoning now, and the only use that's approved for this property is daycare.
They're trying to get it back to that, because this was originally built as a church.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B3. It's zoning docket W-3355, and this is a request to rezone .21 acres from RS7 to residential multifamily, 18 units per acre, limited use zoning. And you can see the site there in yellow at the northeast corner of Granville Drive and West Street in the West Salem neighborhood. If you look at the zoning pattern in the area, it's single-family homes zoned RS7, multifamily development there to the northwest zoned RMUS, and then that property across West Street is the park, the tennis courts and the park area there. This request is for Family Group Home B. So currently, the property is used as a Family Group Home A. Family Group Home A allows a maximum of six residents. If this request is approved for Family Group Home B, that would allow a maximum of 12 residents. RM18 is the district they needed to go to based on the lot size they have there for this piece of property. Staffs reviewed this. We believe it's consistent with the area plan, and we would recommend approval of this limited use request. We would also note that the applicant did reach out to the West Salem neighborhood, went to their meeting back in November. You've got a write-up in your packet there. It appeared it was a favorable response from the neighborhood. So staff would recommend approval of this.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said none. The public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Mr. Grubbs, motion. Second by Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B4. It's zoning docket W-3356, and this is a request to rezone 1.3 acres from limited industrial to pedestrian business, limited use zoning. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's loosely bounded by Walnut Street there to the north, Poplar Street to the east, Salem Avenue to the south, and Broad Street to the west. And if you look at that zoning map, it's kind of a hodgepodge of zonings, various commercial zonings, LB, PB, and HB, and then you've got LI zoning there, as well as a mixture of residential zonings there. So staff reviewed this. We believe the PBL zoning district is appropriate for this area. We believe it's much more appropriate than the LI zoning that's currently there. We believe it's consistent with the area plan recommendations, and we also believe it's consistent with the previous, I think there are three rezonings that we cited in the staff report that have been approved, either PB or PBS in the general area. With this, again, the applicant did reach out to the West Salem neighborhood. I think they went to the same meeting as the prior case. You've got that write-up there, and I believe the response was positive from the neighborhood as well in this case. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this request.
Yeah. No one has signed up. Anyone here opposed to that recommendation? Said none. The public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Bryan. In discussion?
I just had a question.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. King. There seems to be a little piece there in between the yellow, that piece. Now, what is that zone? I just couldn't tell by the map.
It looks like it's LI Limited Industrial.
Okay. So you've still got an LI piece kind of sandwiched in there.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B5. It's UDO 284. This is a text amendment that staff is proposing to establish building material requirements for retail stores. We need a little bit more time to come up and do some research on that. So we were requesting the automatic continuance to the January meeting. We got it in the book, so we will bring this back to you at your January meeting.
Maybe B6.
Yeah, B6.
B6. Sorry, not B5.
Six.
Next item is Item C1, and this is PBR 2017-13, and this is a 13-lot planned residential development in RS9 zoning on about seven acres of land. And you can see the site in yellow there. It's on the north side of Coravan Drive and the south side of Leland Drive. To get you a little bit more oriented, this is, you can barely see Robin Hood Road on the top of that screen right there. This is south of Robin Hood, kind of wet between Polo and Shadlon in that area. Jefferson School would be back over to the east in that area. This is a site plan that's been submitted with this request. It's oriented a little bit differently, so Coravan would be over here to the right, and Leland would be over here to the left. Again, this is a planned residential development, so we do need to look at open space components. Public road that would come in, basically just straight in and lot it off on either side. Passive open space is satisfied through the area here. I guess that'd be along the eastern side, the perimeter buffer area here, and this portion over in the northwest corner. Active open space, they're proposing a gazebo and an amenity area here at the front entrance. We think that's good. That meets the intent, centrally located, and they are including their perimeter buffer yard over here where they had joined those single-family lots. And then stormwater will be taken care of over here in this northwest corner as well. We do need to revise a condition on this, and I believe you've got a handout at your places there. I'll kind of go through this and see if I can make sense of it. We need to strike that first, everything in that existing condition down to relocation or installation. Let me explain what that is. A lot of what you see there is basically those are comments about getting a grading permit if you're disturbing more than 10,000 square feet, how to submit your plan. Those are just comments. The last sentence is getting a watershed protection permit. This site's not in a watershed, so we do not need to get a watershed protection permit. That was an error on staff's part, so we need to delete what's there and replace it with the language that's underlined on the screen in front of you. And I'll just read that into the record quickly, so we have that there. Stormwater study plan must be submitted and approved with a post-construction. Stormwater management permit issued prior to issuance of a grading permit. Study or plan should include addressing all the applicable water quality provisions of the ordinance, as well as managing the stormwater runoff to attenuate the ordinance water quantity design provisions. In addition to meeting the ordinance quantity design criteria as a condition of planning board approval, the site must also manage the 50-year peak event back to or at or below predeveloped rates, and also manage the increase in the 50-year volume difference from the pre to the post condition, and release this volume over a period of two to five days. So let me just mention something on that. That condition, what that's doing is that's placing a condition on this site that's above and beyond what's required by Chapter 75. We worked with the developer on this to, I think stormwater had some concerns. We worked with the developer on this. They were agreeable to kind of going above and beyond what's in Chapter 75. So that's what that's condition, that's what that condition is doing, and the developer is agreeable to that. So staff would recommend approval of this PRD with the revised condition that's in front of you.
Okay. Move approval. Question. Okay. Is this going to become our standard practice? Is this what we're going to do? Instead of taking the stand, we're just going to up it a little bit until we revise the rules? Is that what we're thinking about doing?
I don't know that it's going to become the standard practice. On this one, we had a fairly, I don't want to say easy, but a fairly reasonable solution that we worked out with the developer on this, and I think they were agreeable. I don't know that it's going to become the standard practice.
I just, I'd just say, you know, if we're going to change policy, let's change the regs. Let's get stormwater involved with it and change the regs. Anyway, I've made a motion.
Have a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Younger. Other discussion?
Clear.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does that mean, does this additional wording mean that there will necessarily be a stormwater pond?
I would probably, we don't have stormwater staff with us here today. I would probably defer to the design engineer who's here to see if they've gone far enough in their design work to be able to answer that question, if you'd like to hear from them.
I was just wondering, because it wasn't shown on the site plan.
Right.
Good evening. My name's Aiden Stoltz Fuess, 1009 Lisa Run Drive in Kernersville, North Carolina. In working through the preliminary design, of course, we don't have all the, like, the stormwater facilities designed out as we, like, street plan profiles, that sort of thing, but we do have a spot for the stormwater BMP, whether it be a dry pond or a depressed swell. You're talking about 12 lots, so it is a small amount of acreage that would be flowing into the stormwater BMP there. So I guess your question would be, is, if there'd be a pond, there would be some sort of device. It's wooded, the site's wooded right now, and to control predevelopment conditions to, or post-development to predevelopment conditions, we'd have to contain it somehow or another. So.
Okay. So you'll do the engineering later, but that's the location where the management device would be?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just remind the board, we're going to have Keith Huff with the City Stormwater Division come to your January work session to kind of talk about the overall stormwater vagues, where they are. That would be an ideal time to ask about what's the future holds.
Mr. Chairman, if I could get clarification, is that approval with the revised condition?
It is.
Okay. It was the second?
Mr. Younger.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? A motion for approval. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Last item is Item C2. This is PBR 2017-14. This is a nine-lot planned residential development in RS40 zoning. It's on the west side of Harper Road, south of Styrs Ferry Road. You can see the site there in yellow, again, 13.1 acres. And this is a site plan that's been submitted with this request. Basically, just showing the road coming in, the midpoint frontage there on Harper Road. It is a private road, and it's proposed to be gated out at Harper Road. Based on that, that private road configuration, those gates, staff did not ask for stubs to the north and south, north or the south. It is a PRD, so in terms of looking at their open space, they're located along a thoroughfare, so they are showing their thoroughfare open space along Harper Road. They're showing their perimeter buffer yards to the north and to the south. They satisfy their passive open space requirements by this large area to the rear, and then their active open space is shown here at the end of the cul-de-sac, kind of a park-like setting. So it does meet UDO requirements, and staff would recommend approval of this PRD request.
Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Grubbs. In discussion?
Yeah. Let me ask a question. What, the site, if I'm looking at this first page with the yellow, is, what is the zoning on that right next to Harper Road? Has this all been rezoned for?
The zoning for the subject property that you see in yellow here is RS40, and the zoning to the north and to the south are both RS40. If you're looking at that heavy, are you looking at that heavy line? Is that what's?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that would be to the north. The orientation's different here. Yeah.
Yep. So that's the jurisdiction line. So that's the line that delineates Forsyth County zoning versus Lewisville zoning. That's what that heavy red line is.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So it's right in the middle of the big field there?
Pretty much.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
That brings us to UDO 283, and Kelly Bennett will make the presentation on that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. UDO 283 is a request to allow multifamily uses in the highway business and general office zoning districts, and it also would remove duplex and twin home uses from the general business zoning district. This amendment was continued from your October meeting. It was originally proposed in a report that staff presented to the board in April 2017 concerning strategies to promote mixed-use development, benefits of which are an active urban environment, optimum use of infrastructure, increased walkability, and reduced automobile trips. Staff recommended amending the UDO to allow multifamily in HB, GEO, and CPO districts, especially in activity centers along growth corridors, but after further review believes that CPO is not as logical an environment for multifamily as HB and GEO, since it's not located along growth corridors or in activity centers. Removing the duplex and twin home uses from GB would ensure that this district is reserved for just intense uses, and GB is mainly in activity centers and growth corridors as well. This map shows where all of the, all of the county's HB and GEO zoning is located. You could see it in relationship to growth corridors and activity centers, which are outlined here. See them along University Parkway, Ronaldo Road, Peters Creek Parkway, Patterson So this text amendment, we did a lot of community outreach, emails to the community liaisons, neighborhood organizations, and other stakeholders in August, October, and November. We held two community meetings after the public hearing in October, in November and December. Citizens were concerned that adding residential uses here would bypass community input and a public hearing process that a rezoning brings, and the possibility that this change would lead to gentrification and displacement of low-income residents, and that smaller lots of HB-zoned property are located closer to neighborhoods. This is a list of all of the uses in our UDO. Highlighted in green are the uses that are allowed in the HB district. Their overall pretty intense district, pretty intense uses include retail store, movie theater, movie theater drive-in, animal shelter, churches, shooting range, landfills, police and fire station, and this, this text amendment would add the uses of residential building townhouse and residential building multifamily to these uses. Same with GEO, highlighted in green. These are what's allowed in the general office district. There are a couple residential uses already in here, fraternity and sorority, and they're mainly office uses, but it is a mixture. It also has landfill, nursing care, library, schools, transmission towers. This would allow same two uses, townhouses and multifamily buildings. Could see, these are the districts that allow multifamily, and you can see that there's a gap here. Multifamily is allowed in the neighborhood office and limited office zoning districts at four units, 12 units an acre, not currently allowed in the general office district. And there's a gap in the business zoning districts, multifamily allowed in the pedestrian business and general business districts, not allowed in highway business. And this would propose 18 units an acre, which is in line with the progression of the office districts here, and unlimited density, up to 60 feet tall in the highway business district. So staff would also recommend adding the townhouse use, which was not originally recommended in the, in the report from April, to encourage a mix of housing types and possibly more affordable housing products. And after the community meetings, our recommendation is to not allow multifamily in HB on lots smaller than one acre, because a lot of those, those sites are closer to neighborhoods. They're not, they're not generally along growth corridors and in activity centers. You could see a map here that shows that. You could see some of these smaller sites on the south side of town that would be excluded from the multifamily development provision. And to give you a better idea of how this would look, this is a current GEO-zoned property, County Social Services and Health Department, and then this is what an 18-unit-per-acre multifamily development looks like. Again, this is an HB-zoned property, North Summit Square Shopping Center on University Parkway, pretty intense use, a lot of empty parking. And this is horizontal mixed-use development, the lofts at Little Creek. This building here is that building, and it's about 40 units per acre. It's next to restaurants, a hotel, offices, which the people who live here use. So in summary, this change could encourage mixed-use development and activity centers along growth corridors, which are not, not in neighborhoods, so would protect the integrity and residential character of neighborhoods. Could also encourage more incremental mixed-use development in those out parcels, parking lots, and other infill locations, and it could help redevelopment efforts in underutilized suburban commercial and office locations, which would also promote residential units near employment areas. No displacement of residents would occur since there are no residents in the HB or GEO zoning. It would just increase the possibilities of residential development in those areas. And the recommendation is for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just make a couple comments here. First of all, since, even though you already had a public hearing on this in October, because you did continue it, and we did make a change in what was proposed from the October 12 version, I would recommend holding a full public hearing again. But I did want to make a few comments just to kind of underline a few things behind what Kelly was saying. First of all, the idea for this didn't just kind of sneak in and pop up from nowhere. The need to find some ways to encourage multifamily in areas other than in the middle of neighborhoods came up during the Legacy 2030 Conference of Plan process. As I think most everyone knows, Forsyth County is a pretty small county, and we're further constrained by our topography because we can only put public sewer in the central two-thirds of Forsyth County. So if we're going to be ready for growth that could happen over the next 20 years, we've got to make the wisest use of the land that makes the most sense for different types of intensities of uses. So one of the things that Legacy talked about in a number of the sections was, well, first of all, our population is diversifying, and not only is diversifying by age and race and all that, but the households are diversifying. We're having more single-person households. We're having more single-parent households. We're certainly having a lot more baby boomers that are aging up. We're having millennials who have different housing preferences now than people of that age maybe 20 years ago. All of those trend toward more, a stronger market for multifamily. And there have even been some housing market studies that have done, that have, that both here and around the country, that have said to get ready for the future, we've got to be ready for more multifamily. There's certainly going to be single family, but multifamily is going to, is going to have a pretty strong demand for these different types of housing products. And so where do you put those? Where do you put those? And so Legacy suggested focusing on activity centers, the downtown area, and growth corridors. And not just anywhere on growth corridors, because as you remember from the map for the growth management map, growth corridors stretch long distances, and some of those corridors are urban corridor, urban portions, suburban portions, and rural portions. So in those areas that make the most sense, where you have the most intensity suggested by already, you know, the zoning you already have, those make the most sense to start mixing uses more, including residential. So Legacy set a, a policy basis for doing this, and Legacy So Legacy set a policy basis for doing this, and Legacy wasn't done in the blind. There was, as you remember, there was lots and lots of public participation in the Legacy process, and it was unanimously adopted by all of our elected bodies, as you all helped put that together. So moving forward from that, we, as part of this, you had the report that Kelly had mentioned earlier this year, that kind of talked about this specifically. There was an agreement that we should put that on our work program, which we did. And then Kelly got the word out several weeks in advance of the first public hearing, so that if people had questions or concerns, we could have some dialogue on that. I would be, we have 35 different zoning districts in our ordinance. And so if you take the idea that you want every change of use to be a rezoning, theoretically you'd have to have 157 different zoning districts. So every time there was a change of use, you would change from one zoning district to another. Obviously, no one's suggesting that we go there, but I am saying that among our peer cities in North Carolina, we are the second highest number of zoning districts that there are. Only Charlotte has slightly more zoning districts than we do. All of our other peer cities, including the most restrictive of all that I've known, which is Chapel Hill, have less zoning districts than we do. And all of those, except for Cary, allow for a multifamily residential in their commercial zoning districts. There's one little variation in Greensboro. They don't allow multifamily in the very low-intensity neighborhood commercial districts, but all the other commercial districts, they do. So Greensboro, Raleigh, Charlotte, Durham, Chapel, even Chapel Hill allows multifamily by permit only in commercial districts. So we're not kind of out of skew with other cities, is what I'm trying to say. So I think with that, we felt that what we were putting together was certainly not out of character with what other cities are doing. And as we've talked about before, cities back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, after World War II, kind of got away from more compact mixed-use, that was before World War II, and started to go towards separating the uses, becoming more auto-oriented and all that. But beginning in the 90s and going forward to now, more and more cities, progressive cities and cities that are growing, are looking to more mixed-use development where it makes sense to do that. And so this is certainly in line with good planning practice that's happening around the country.
Quick question.
Yes, Paul?
So did you say that this was consistent with what Legacy was saying?
Yes.
And that the community did have a voice in that?
Well, yes. As you know, Legacy covered a lot of different things. So we never had a meeting saying, let's just talk about multifamily in commercial districts. We did not do that. But we did talk growth management-wise about how are we going to accommodate 100,000 more people? Where should they go? And there was pretty much an agreement that we don't want to kind of come into neighborhoods and kind of mash down on them with multifamily zoning, but growth corridors and activity centers in downtown were the places that we needed to start looking for higher density. And that does the added thing of helping increase the potential for a more robust public transit system. And that's one of the things we are also seriously lacking in, is having a more robust public transit system. And so that, putting those along growth quarters, really helps toward the future to promote a more viable transit system.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with Paul that we just do another public hearing, although we close the alone so.
Could I ask a question of Mr. Bennett?
Sure.
While he's there. You mentioned the 60-foot height limit in H B for multifamily.
Yes.
How many stories would that be?
It depends on how tall each of those stories is, and then the roof line, whether it's a flat roof or peaked roof, but it's generally four to five stories.
Four to five, okay, thank you.
Okay. So we will have a public hearing. It'll be 12 minutes of each side. We have multiple speakers on each side. First person signed up as proponent is Gary Merritt.
My name is Gary Merritt. I'm a board member of the North Carolina Housing Foundation, 750 Bethesda Road, Winston-Salem 27104. North Carolina Housing Foundation has been around since 1968. We're a multifamily developer here in Winston-Salem, Forsyth County. We own, I was just trying to think, it's either 17 or 18 properties in the city and county. We provide housing for elderly and families. One thing we understand about the housing we provide is you have to have not only good shelter, but you got to have services to go with that shelter. What you're looking at, has been recommended to you today, is something that used to wouldn't work. We couldn't be able to retail and put housing above it, and it worked. We never could lease that. I mean, that's just the way the market was. Guess what? The market's changed. Just like who'd ever thought you could put loft apartments and tobacco manufacturing facilities downtown and pay the rents that they're paying. You go around the country and you look at development trends around the country, redevelopment of downtown and redevelopment activity centers, and you'll see retail with multifamily above it. This is putting us in the 21st century, and I and the foundation support this wholly. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes. Excuse me, sir. Mr. Merritt Brown has a question.
Sure.
I'm aware, well aware, of what the Housing Foundation does. And you have a commitment to housing of special populations and affordable solutions and things like that. I think one of the aspects of this whole piece is, how do we encourage that across other developers? You all have a commitment to it. When we see your name connected to it, we know you're coming at it from that angle. But you're the exception, not the rule. Do you have any thoughts on how to encourage affordable housing with this type of a change?
If I had the answer to that, I'd have the keys to the kingdom.
I hope it isn't that difficult.
It's tough.
Yeah.
But the success of affordable housing in any community is two things. Number one, the community's got to understand affordable housing, shelter and services, and what that does to the lifestyle of the residents that live in your properties. Second thing is, is that what Winston-Salem has done a really good job of is that public and private money. The community and the Housing Department here has been very proactive in helping facilitate pre-development of affordable housing. That's why our success in the 10-year plan in chronic homelessness was so successful, because of the things we had done. And the Housing Foundation gets the credit for a lot of stuff that a lot of people did, that we just happened to be the development partner in it. And so it takes a community, not just one person.
We'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm John Lauder. I'm the Executive Director for the Piedmont Triad Department Association, office at 301 North Main Street, 27101. I live in Williamsburg Square at 2001 Williamsburg Manor Court. I'm here to, obviously speaking in favor of the staff's suggestion. I have a ton of prepared comments, but Mr. Norby covered a lot of what I was going to cover, so I'll cut to the chase. I represent the apartment industry. These are apartment developers and managers. We have, our association represents the entire Piedmont Triad, so that's about 65,000 apartment units throughout the triad, of which 20,000 is here in Forsyth County. It's almost all market rate. I will say that the notable exception is the Housing Authority, Winston-Salem is a member of ours, and they are a significant contributor to the work that we do. The reason that we are supporting this is, it is, as Mr. Norby indicated, it is difficult to find places where you're not going to get a tremendous amount of pushback on apartment We completely understand neighborhood concerns. I think anybody, any reasonable person would. We also know that we face a lot of, often there are, there's a great amount of nimbyism when you talk about affordable housing. Everybody thinks it's a great idea until it's going to be built next to them. And that's a challenge that we have to face. My main point today is this: affordable housing has to be addressed by all types of housing. If you don't have enough market rate housing, then all rents will go up. We are facing a tremendous population growth over the next 15, 20 years, and if we don't build, then the existing housing will get more expensive. And so we need to build all types of housing. I cannot stand here and tell you that if you approve this zoning change, that you will necessarily get designated affordable housing in those areas. It all depends on financing. It's a complicated issue. But I will tell you that you will make it easier for people to develop multifamily housing of some kind, and that will contribute to the affordability across the board eventually. There is definitely a cause and effect there. I think the staff has done an admirable job. They've done a lot of research. They've done a lot of outreach. I think that you would be hard-pressed to find a better or more effective zoning addition than this one, and we strongly support it. And on behalf of our members, we strongly support it. And happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Good evening to all, and happy holidays. I'm Jack Stillman with Miller Hatcher Commercial Real Estate, 2150 Country Club Road, Suite 230, Winston-Salem, 27104. I'm also proud to say that I was born and raised on Fourth Street, where mixed uses made my childhood life delightful. And would also say that the concept of multifamily housing in a commercial area is really only as new as the below house in Old Salem, by one example. In a city of arts and innovation, innovation begins and ends with progressive public policy. We find that, even though in a conservative way compared to other urban areas around the country, in the comprehensive plan, in Legacy, and we need to implement those parts of that plan that will enable us to better accommodate the future. I happen to live out in the Pottstown area. Right down the street from us, there's a new shopping center with office spaces and apartments, and it's delightful on the way home at night, stopping into the store, to look at the young people walking out of the apartments, to the grocery stores, to the restaurants, and so forth. By what I've said so far, in the interest of time, let me say, I fully support the proposed amendment. I think the staff has done a great job. I also fully respect the concern of neighborhood residents, and would encourage them to trust in the skills and expertise that are on this board and this planning staff, as they are required to review every site plan for multifamily development in the areas we're considering tonight. Thank you for your efforts in this regard. And once more, would just say, I highly support this amendment. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else would like to speak in support of this?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Paul McHale, 1204 Ronaldo Road, Winston-Salem. I am the chairman of 2017 for RCA Realtors Commercial Alliance. I'm also on the Board of Directors, and that's our 100th year, Winston-Salem Realtors Association. We do support this. We think it's good. It's needed, and it gives us more flexibility in the use of these pieces that are still there, being redeveloped. So everybody's got a letter, I think, that we sent in support, the Board of Directors sent in support of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Paul, what's your zip code?
27104.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? If not, then we'll turn to the opposition.
Hello. How are you doing?
Good.
My name is Sally Hirsch. I live at 1831 Brantley Street in Ardmore, 27103. And I'm against this U D O, 283. And I'd like to ask if there are a number of people in our audience today that agree with me on that. All right. So we'll hear from a few of those folks. Can I put this down? Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, it's been an interesting afternoon and hearing everybody, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to speak, because I understand that this U D O will take that freedom away from me and away from people that live in neighborhoods. And that's what I want to speak about. So I believe that what this U D O amounts to is a sale of Winston-Salem. Is everything a commodity to you? I know this can't be of your making. You're just carrying out the orders of others, and it appears that others would like to be the only voice in Winston-Salem when it comes to development decisions now. Yes, we put the U D Os in place, and there was public participation in the Legacy Plan. Some, some, but I think people want to stay involved. That's my feeling. So if everything is a commodity, then how do you put a price on the following? Proximity to downtown and everything it has to offer: theater, art, restaurants, conventions, hotels, government, bus stations, hospitals, historical buildings, urban farms, that's a new thing, culture. And how about natural culture? Forests, clean rivers, clean air, clean food, bees and other pollinators, healthy ecosystems? How do we put a price on all this? I think we're trying to. One of our speakers today, actually she's not here, but a speaker would have been saying that the city, how can the city take the voice of neighborhood citizens away when it hasn't even completed their study of affordable housing? So we don't really even know what we're talking about yet, and we're taking the voice of the citizen away. Are we to presume the poor are in good hands? Can one of you tell me about the health of our rivers here? We had a little problem with some schools, and we had to move children. That was a problem. Are we going to face other problems like that with neighborhoods? We better look closely at our rivers and their health. I'm imagining the future of Peters Creek Parkway, the low-income people living there now. How will they afford these new developments? Well, they may not be living in the business section, but they're living behind. And if you start bringing in higher income, changing the affordability of their services and the retail centers there, then how are they going to survive that? You may not be displacing them, but I believe you are going to be displacing some of them. They will lose out, they'll be losing connection to easily accessible services that they need, and they'll be losing connection to each other. We've seen it happen with other gentrification that's occurred here. They'll be losing connection to their community. How about first reconnecting them to a clean river, Peters Creek? And environment. They've lived with a polluted one probably most of their lives. How about connecting them first to an understanding of their past, and how they came to be the unfortunate ones living in these areas? I know some white privileged people would like to come into the inner city, and they're eager to start farms, urban farms, sustainable eager to start farms, urban farms, sustainable communities. It's a beautiful vision. I've heard some that want to go into Happy Hills. They're white. That was a black neighborhood. That was historically, I believe, the first black neighborhood. So I've learned, I'm not positive about a lot of things, but maybe you can fill me in. Well, this UDO will make everything, including lives and histories, once again for sale. The people of Winston-Salem should not stand for this. None of us should. Thank you.
Eric Bushnell.
My name is Eric Bushnell, 2113 Walker, 27106, and I represent the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance. First of all, we do appreciate that this proposal is intended to provide a benefit. There are some neighborhoods, however, that have very strong concerns about the unintended consequences for the affordability of housing. So the Neighborhood Alliance cannot support this as a, sorry, cannot support this as a standalone policy. In order for this to work for everyone, we believe it has to be tied into other city policies about housing. And I think even some of the proponents sort of got to that point a bit. This really should be part of a more comprehensive set of policies about housing in Winston-Salem. And that probably goes beyond the scope of zoning. The city, as mentioned, has an affordable housing study underway. If this goes to the City Council, we will ask the Council to reconcile this proposal with that effort. We cannot endorse it as a separate standalone policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Bushnell, and some of the comments Ms. Hirsch made, made me think about this as well. I may have missed something in the reading, but it sounds like you're convinced that the property wouldn't be affordable. Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
The, the trend
The trend?
Has been for more upscale, higher, higher rent housing
Okay.
In, in this town, from somewhat what's been reported in the media and other North Carolina cities. The current trend seems to be to go for
I was just wondering if you had seen some plans that I hadn't seen, but you're talking about what you've seen elsewhere
Correct.
Throughout the city.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Carolyn Heisman.
Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Heisman and live at 3335 Anderson Drive, 27127. And I am here again on behalf of the New South Community Coalition, representing neighborhood areas in South Winston-Salem. First, I want to thank the Planning Board for continuing the UDO 283 public hearing process, so that two stakeholders meetings can be held with the planning staff, the Planning Department staff during this interim period. As a result of some of the concerns raised at this very, at the very well-attended November 2nd stakeholders meeting, the planning staff amended the proposed UDO 283 to limit multifamily development to parcels greater than one acre in size for HB zoning districts. This change is a great first step towards protecting single-family neighborhoods from multifamily development on smaller highway business zone lots. However, this text amendment still has a long way to go to protect single-family neighborhoods from the pressures of large mixed-use multifamily development projects on one acre or larger highway business lots and on any size general office zone lot. Why? Because UDO 283 is proposing a massive rezoning of highway business and general office properties throughout the city with only a planning board review, effectively silencing, silencing citizen voices and blocking any citizen participation in this massive rezoning of citywide properties. If the previously City Council-approved accessory dwelling UDO was written to require homeowners to participate in the full zoning process and public hearings before the Planning Board and the City Council for building or redesigning their own accessory dwellings, shouldn't developers proposing large mixed-use development projects on HB and GEO properties adjacent to or near to neighborhoods also be required to participate in the full zoning process for maximum citizen participation? Without citizen input in any new mixed-use development proposal, there could be unforeseen and destructive consequences to nearby single-family home neighborhoods, especially older low-to-middle-income neighborhoods adjacent to HB and GEO zoning districts, possibly leading to the negative effects of gentrification, where lower-income neighborhoods are overrun by high-end development and can push out and destroy the character and, and the integrity of these neighborhoods, especially older minority neighborhoods. In conclusion, the New South Community Coalition urges the Planning Board to reject UDO 283 as currently written, and to ask the Planning Department to change UDO 283 so that the full zoning process with public hearings before the Planning Board and the City Council is included in this UDO that essentially has meant an effort to jump-start mixed-use multifamily development in HB and GEO zone properties. And even better, we urge the Planning Board to encourage the Planning Department to develop a more comprehensive mixed-use zoning policy for the entire city, instead of letting developers by right build any project they so desire without the input of citizen participation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak?
Two minutes and twenty seconds.
How much?
Two twenty.
Two minutes. Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Jo Allen. I'm president of Action for NAM Incorporated. And first of all, I will, P.O. Box 28427102. First of all, I'd like to do a 101 civics lessons very quickly for those individuals who are not here, who may see this later. First of all, everyone that sits on this committee has been appointed by the city government, the City Council, as well as the county commissioners. Let, let's, that be known, first of all. It is your duty and your responsibility, once you took on this, to do what's right by the people. I go before the City Council Board every opportunity that I can. And I know quite a, quite a lot of connections just here on this board along with those individuals also. I'm here to say that all the proponents, they, their bottom line is money. Why would they care about, you know, any apartments, affordable housing, or anything like that? That's not why they're here. Their bottom line is money. Your responsibility is to be for and with the people of Winston-Salem Forsyth County. That's what it's for. Okay? And one of the things I have to disagree very strongly with Mr. Norby, as far as all, you know, all these residents, and let me make sure I get this right, a lot of community outreach? No, there has been no community outreach. As you can take a look around, you do not see a lot of people of color here. And it sounds great when we say that, oh, this is progress. You're right. But let's get down to the nuts and bolts of this. In Legacy 2015 with the city and Wake Forest University, because that's basically what we're talking about, what's okay for Wake Forest University? Even in 2005, when Wake Forest and the city of Winston-Salem made this comment, and it's written down for anyone who wants to check, fact-check this, that they were going to bring at least 15,000 people to Forsyth County by the year of 2015. Do you know how many jobs they brought here? They brought, what, 3,600? I said all that to say this: Sure enough, I'm all for progress, and I think you all should be as well. But let's not do it at the expense of the gentrification going into the neighborhoods just so we may get all these individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the time, so I'll declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Second. I have a motion for approval of Mr. Grubbs, second by Mr. Lamb. Any discussion?
Yes. I definitely think we should have some discussion. So, in some of the things that I read and some of the things that I heard, many people feel that the issue, the problem isn't whether or not it's allowed. The problem is whether or not people have an opportunity to talk about it, to express their concerns about it. And for the seven-plus years that I've been on this board, I've been concerned about that as well. One of the first things I look at whenever we get our board packet is, has there been neighborhood outreach? And when, what are some of the, the neighbors' concerns? And, and most of that time, I've managed to get to this meeting a little early just to talk to people. And they don't even know who I am when I ask them why they're here and what they would, would like to know and what their position is. So, I, I'm not opposed to seeing this type of development, but I'm a little concerned that we're, concerned if UDO 283 would not allow the conversation. I'm not necessarily sold one way or the other just yet, but I'm not ready to vote.
I also think that my concern is that there are two totally different sides. You know, normally, there's some agreeance here. And I just feel like, you know, it's left and right, and that concerns me. I don't know if that's lack of meetings or lack of communication getting out. I'm, I'm not sure where this total divide is coming from.
Yeah, that divide concerns me, because I don't think it's really looking at what the issue is, the issues are with that. And we've had other cases where we're allowing a change there. If you look at the, all the other uses that are allowed within these zoning areas now, there's currently no input with the neighborhoods for those things to happen, and some of those are a lot more likely to impact the surrounding community, or just as likely. So I don't see how the multifamily is this dark cloud over now. This could happen when you have so many things that can happen currently without the neighborhood input with it, for doing that. I think there are a lot of people here that are on the same side. You've got affordable housing represented apartments. Someone has to put the investment into these properties. I kind of reject that everybody that does that is doing it for personal greed. I think you have a community that doesn't survive just on that. I think that people in this city do work together, and they want to do that. And I think we, as a board, have done what we could to give everybody the opportunity to participate in this and see this. So I think it can be a win-win. I think we're projecting maybe only the negative gentrification, but that's not the only possibility. There's wonderful other possibilities. If you do have affordable, you have mixed use, you have people that can't afford to have a car, can live somewhere that they have services. So there's a lot more potential other than just gentrification in this situation. And I, I, that's what I think of this and why I would support this.
When you know, the, the comment was made that we were all appointed by the City Council and the County Commissioners, and I think that's a good one. That, that is part of the, the people in this community having a voice. They have voices through their elected representatives who appoint each of us. But we're not going to be sitting here just watching developers parade through with their building plans. There's still a, a process that we're going to go through. I, I understand the, the need on, or at least the view that there's a need for a public hearing, but there was a comment made that on some level, you have to trust the planning staff and us as sort of appointed representatives via the City Council and County Commissioners. So I, I think to say that we're just giving developers carte blanche to do whatever they want, sort of flies in the face of the fact that we're all sitting where we're sitting, and this staff that works so hard does what they do every day. So I, I kind of take a little bit of umbrage with the fact that there's folks out here that work hard every day to make sure that we're doing things the right way. And I think all of us pride ourselves on, you know, considering these issues and, and not just watching developers walk through.
Well, a developer could be anyone. It could be a group of people that band together and have an intended purpose. Now, they have an opportunity to build in these areas that they didn't have. So there's only, there's not one type of developer that's open to anybody that wants to make the investment and put the financing and bring it to us to look at.
I think we're unfolding some deeper issues that have been in our community for a while. Whereas, Paul, I would totally agree with you that Legacy is trying to increase infill. Legacy also talked about affordable housing. It talked about poverty. It talked about diversity. And what I'm seeing in listening to this and being in a number of meetings is that these issues are sort of tumbling around, they're unfolding, and they're coming out in front of us at that last meeting, at a number of meetings, and here. And it, it, it's, it's a little bit perhaps of a reach, because the idea is good. I mean, to have this development in that place. And, and, and personal conversations, I've heard that, yeah, that's, we want to see that happen, but maybe this isn't the way to do it. The, the issue of affordable housing has now been molded into this same discussion, which, along with the word gentrification. And you would think, well, maybe that's a reach. But in reviews, when we're looking at reviews up here, we have no real, I mean, we're just looking at some standard things, and frankly, after looking at the last review we did, I mean, we had no information, but yet we had to make a decision on a review. So I don't think that if it's left to the Planning Board in reviews, that citizens are going to have input. The other thing that's unfolding at the same time of talking about affordable housing is an awakening in neighborhoods that they should have some say about what's happening in their neighborhood and how they want to see their neighborhood develop. And, and, you know, planning is sort of trying to tell people what they do, but it's also listening. And, and what we're hearing here is people finding themselves and saying, wait a minute, we should have talked about this, and we didn't know not to talk about that, and, and now here we have it. A lot of this goes back to the City Council and, and what they've been grappling with for years. And, and, you know, I grew up in Winston-Salem when Happy Hills was being developed and things like that, and the planners thought, this is the answer. And, and it wasn't the answer, and it, and it keeps evolving. We've seen the hope-six developments, and we've seen people displaced. We see Happy Hills, and it isn't completed. People were just sent out, and there's empty land, sitting at, at what used to be a neighborhood. So I think all of these things are sort of converging together here. And, and people have a right to have skepticism. What we talk about is affordable housing truly has not been affordable to people that have been displaced in some of these neighborhoods. And they're saying, and, and it's even dangerous to use the word affordable housing because of that. So the one sort of device that the City Council has with these new developments is, sure, we'll approve this zoning if you will consider putting some truly affordable housing within these units. And if the City Council doesn't have any ability or grasp in negotiating these situations, then we've got to find another way to do it. Now, I'm not trying to take away dollars from the bottom line from the developers, because I think the city needs to, to look very clearly at that. The developers still need to make their same amount of money, but there are city dollars that can go into these that will help make that happen. And we can distribute the truly affordable housing across the community rather in enclaves along the way. There's some great models for this. I think that some of the things that will come out of the affordable housing task force will look at this. I don't know whether it's wise for us to maybe wait and see what percolates out of that, and then see if we have general community consensus that this is the way to go. I like the idea, but I'm hearing the community loud and clear.
And, and I, I've struggled with this as well. Did you want to respond, Paul, before I say?
Well, I just wanted to clarify on one point, because I, I think that it certainly is a point well-taken in, in terms of the solution to affordable housing being with public dollars going into these projects as public-private partnerships. That, that certainly is a completely possible thing. It just depends on how much, how much will the public sector be willing to put up to, to do that. But in terms of tying it to zoning, we're going down a really slippery legal slope there. North Carolina does not allow what some other states do, like Massachusetts or elsewhere, which is called inclusionary zoning, where you can mandate through your zoning ordinance that housing developers have to put a But in terms of tying it to zoning, we're going down a really slippery legal slope there. North Carolina does not allow what some other states do, like Massachusetts or elsewhere, which is called inclusionary zoning, where you can mandate through your zoning ordinance that housing developers have to put a certain percentage of affordable housing into their developments or put money into a pot that will go for affordable housing. And so far, the General Assembly over decades has not allowed that in North Carolina. So, to tie that into a zoning condition, I think runs a real legal risk.
You didn't hear me say that.
Right, right.
Because, but you also heard when we were discussing about the development on Fourth Street, that community input helped the developers say, well, I think we could put some affordable housing here. It works as a cooperation of a coming together.
Right, right. I just wanted to give that caution that you can't go down that road very far there without getting into some trouble.
Okay. What I wanted to say is that I have struggled with this because I agree with the goals that Mr. Norby laid out originally, what is the reason for this ordinance. However, I do see this as problematic because I think that it's using a very, very broad brush to get to the goals that you're trying to accomplish. So, what we're doing is giving a buy right allowance of multifamily in all HB and GO. And it may not be appropriate in all HB and GO without some conversation with the neighborhood. And let me just give you one example. There was a very large HB tract. It was about 25 acres on Ronaldo Road that was at one time being considered for a Walmart. And after a lot of discussion about that, that project fell through and it was rezoned for multifamily. It is now a very successful multifamily development. However, it is surrounded on three sides by neighborhoods. One side by Ronaldo Road, the other three sides border single-family properties. And the neighborhood had a lot of input in how that very large multifamily development was developed in terms of the buffers. There were lots of discussions about the buffer yards, about the tree save areas, and about the access through the neighborhood. And that was beneficial, was beneficial to the neighborhood, is beneficial to the project, the final project for the community. So, I really feel that when you're talking about large-scale multifamily, there is a benefit to having that dialogue. I don't think that, in most cases, I think we should be encouraging multifamily in these growth corridors, especially close to the activity centers, and as a way to use unused commercial development. And in our area plans, we encourage that. In our area plans, we try to steer projects that way. And sometimes we even put recommendations for that directly into the plan. And I think that's appropriate, and I think that's what we should do. But when you very, very broadly say anywhere willy-nilly, we should be able to have buy right multifamily without considering all the consequences, I think we're going to open ourselves up for problems. One other example that I want to give is not all of these HB properties, for example, are on growth corridors. That was, or large streets, major thoroughfares. There are a few sprinkled in, and those were the smaller properties that you eliminated through the one acre threshold. But that doesn't capture all the properties. I think it might be better if this ordinance goes forward to say something like, put a requirement that the properties have to be on a major thoroughfare, not, that way you will not inadvertently include some inappropriate properties. And the one I have in mind is in Bethania, the town of Bethania, which is a National Historic Landmark district. There is a two or three, I don't know, acre parcel, bigger than one acre, and it is zoned HB. It's zoned HB, it's on Bethania Road. It's not a major thoroughfare. And for historical reasons, I don't know exactly why it was zoned that way, there is a, I think there might have been a garage or a repair operation there. That would be a very inappropriate place to put multifamily. It's right next to a large lot, single-family subdivision on one side, and on the other side is land that's been permanently protected by the state of North Carolina. So, I just think that we need to think through a little more and target. I think that we should really have a more targeted approach to getting where we want to go. And this, to me, seems much too broad. And it does eliminate a lot of the discussion within neighborhoods.
And my last comment is that one of the things that I'm most proud of that we've done is require that there be neighborhood input in a lot of cases. And this is not that.
So, how do we, how do we square that, though, with the comment that Brenda made that this is a much less intensive use? I keep hearing this opposition to people being able to buy right, do things with their property. How do you square that with the idea that there's somebody in some instances put a landfill in without having this conversation you guys are wanting to have, but yet they can't build multifamily? I'm having trouble reconciling that.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Multifamily, to me, is, it's a large category. And the way, at least we do zoning now, which is separation of uses, we plan for where that large category of development goes. And yes, it's true that we have an allowance for multifamily in some of these other districts, like, for example, limited office and things like pedestrian business. But those are small, usually smaller tracts. What I'm really concerned about is the fact that HB often involves larger tracts of land. And to your question about the intensity, yeah, I think that's a fair point. But I think that if the land was going to be developed and one of these more intense uses that they also are allowed to do, they would do that. I mean, because the market is going to drive them in that direction. They would want to use that to its best and highest use. So, these, the times when they're going to be using multifamilies when they don't have those opportunities.
What if multifamily is the best and highest use, though?
Then you're adding in a new right. You're giving them a new right.
Yeah, I think what I'm struggling with is how is multifamily inherently worse than the other uses that are in highway business? I just, I don't, I'm having trouble seeing that distinction of why there's such a black shadow over multifamily in an already intense highway business. And how is that going to affect the neighbors worse than anything else that's already there?
It's not necessarily worse. It really is. That's what I'm saying. I think we should be encouraging it, but we should be encouraging it in the right way and in the right places. So, to me, by giving such a broad allowance of this anywhere, we may not be getting it in the places where we want it, like more concentrated towards the activity centers.
If you look at where the highway business zoning maps are, where we already are, I mean, it's already set. But there's, you're not going to all of a sudden make some new highway business that it would be okay, except we can't have apartments here, so we won't rezonate highway business.
There's a long stretch of highway business along these corners, is what I'm saying.
I think we're getting hung up. I don't think the impact's as great as we think it is. I can't imagine any already developed HB districts being redeveloped to put multifamily in. I mean, we're dealing probably with just vacant HB properties, and I'm not sure how many there really are out there. The map you showed that was zoned HB wasn't just vacant, that was HB.
It was all HB zoning.
Right.
Right. So, some of it's developed, some of it's totally undeveloped, some of it is marginally developed, some of it is developed and abandoned.
And it is developed and abandoned, and if it could be redeveloped into multifamily, yes, certainly.
And that's exactly the reason I'm so supportive of it, is I think it, two, or two things. There is no better way to contain the cost of rising rents than with supply. I don't care how much public money you put into it. There is no better way to.
Land cost is a factor in affordable housing.
Right. So, then secondly, I can't think of a more attractive way from a market, from a market standpoint to incentivize the redevelopment of a distressed retail facility than with multi-housing. I can't possibly, you know, the hot product right now is probably self-storage. But we're not going to give self-storage, you know, buy right to this stuff. But multifamily housing is certainly, it's got some of the lowest vacancies, you know, in the entire triad. There's just a lot of institutional dollars that, you know, followed that shortage of housing. And it just really gives us, you know, a carrot to hand out for redevelopment opportunities of some of these ailing or underperforming highway business, whether it's a strip center or whether it's something a little bit larger than a strip center. So, you're letting, you know, you're letting market forces do a bunch of work for you rather than to have to do a whole bunch of public dollars. And I understand, and I'm sympathetic with feeling like it's giving, you know, first of all, I mean, I think we ought to have fewer, and I'm sorry to digress, but I think we ought to have fewer, certainly fewer zoning categories. I think we do need to combine some of our things. It's, that's just my opinion there. But I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, from time to time, reviewing the permitted uses in a zoning category. And maybe we take some permitted uses out, maybe we put some permitted uses in. But I just think we really achieve two goals when we do something like this.
Yeah, we're not trying to insert permitted uses that are more intense than what is already there.
Right. And I don't disagree. I just think the two words that keep coming in my head is what the neighborhood is saying, gentrification and affordable housing. You know, I'm not against multifamily, I'm not against development, but we can't continue to overlook what neighborhoods are saying. And how people are feeling.
I'm having a hard problem understanding the gentrification, though, because you're not displacing anyone. These do, there's no one living in HB and GO right now.
That would be a question, I think, for the opposition because I can't answer that question for them.
I think the idea is the spread. So, the vacant property gets developed, drives up property values, which then allows that development to spread. I mean, it's the underlying.
Because displaced people have to go somewhere.
Right.
And so, what you do, you end up forming another pocket.
A good example of that is a meeting I'll be going to later this evening in East Winston. There's some concern about the development in Innovation Quarter, where my office is. And the concern on the other side of 52 is, what's going to happen over here? Are we going to be pushed away? Are we going to be displaced? There's no guarantee that it would, but there's a fear that it would. And I think that same fear is what makes people say they want to make sure they have a voice whenever there's a potential of that happening.
An example for me is what is occurring in Denver right now. And I wish Winston-Salem was having this problem, but residential has become so hot there that it has taken over retail, close to grocery stores that've been there for 50 years, serving a high-end neighborhood, and has caused all kinds of access and parking issues because of the demand for high-end. And I'm talking really high-end apartment use. And so, the neighborhood association around it, as I was reading their newsletters and talking, some of the members said, you know, all we wanted was a little bit of input into how this was happening so that we could come up with some balance between this and still have the services that we were looking for next to the housing that we were in, so that it would be a good plan for everyone. And I thought, well, one day, maybe Winston-Salem will be in that situation. We're not there yet.
So, someone help me understand the real reason that you're opposed to the staff's recommendation.
The lack of public input for me. I'm all for development, I'm all for multifamily when it makes sense. But in a situation where the immediate neighborhood is concerned about it, then I want them to at least have a voice.
I concur.
HB, how much HB is up next to residential? I mean, I would imagine most of the HB is even surrounded by GB or stepped down, or already some multifamilies.
And I think in principle, that's, and I agree with that, you want the input, but we're, I think we're going way beyond what this specifically does. And I don't think you mean that any of the other uses that don't have input, you would be opposed to those two.
To me, it's not about the uses, it's more about the process. And for example, we didn't require every zoning to have neighborhood input. Now, in every, every one of our cases, that relevant cases, they have to get in touch with the neighborhood before they come to us. There are a lot of times when cases would come to us and we'd say, we're going to continue it, go back and have a meeting with the neighborhood. We don't say that nearly as much anymore because they have that meeting in advance. I think it's important that they have that meeting in advance as much as possible.
And I'm understanding that concern, but let me just point out, too, we have hundreds of changes of use every day. I mean, not every day, every year, sorry.
You feel busy sometimes.
That would be, yeah, that would be dizzying. But, and those changes of use many times are done within a zoning district without a rezoning. And those, and just as we were talking about in terms of the numbers of uses allowed in HB, you can get, you can have a fairly benign commercial use that transfers into some, something that could have a lot of neighborhood impact. If the neighborhood ideally wanted to have a voice in that because there is a fear that it could negatively impact their property values, then, you know, that's an argument for saying, we need to have more zoning districts rather than less zoning districts so that when a change of use happens, you got to go through a rezoning. So, I mean, there's, you can, you can take that argument into a lot of different territories.
And I'm not doing that. I'm just talking about what's before me, not the hypothetical. So, there have been those changes of use, and we've seen some of them, and they've been on the consent agenda. But then there have been others that.
They happen in the permit office.
Right. Or, yeah, they don't even come to us. But there are some that do cause alarm for people, and this seems to be one of them.
Any other comments, discussion? You guys ready to vote? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Opposed? Four for, so it goes forward, no recommendation. Mr. McIntosh will take care of it and sit. You're welcome. We're here to serve you, sir. Staff report.
Okay. We have sign check. I don't think anybody would want to go to sign check the way the normal calendar would work, which would be December 25th.
Let me think about it.
So, we're going to do sign check the morning of December 22nd, Friday. So, just so you all know about that, 8:15, we'll be rolling out of here. For January's caseload, we're going to have two county cases, zero city cases coming. We will have UDO 284 coming back, as you saw today. That was the material requirements on retail stores. But you will also have a new text amendment coming to you at the request of city council, and that is a amendment to the accessory dwelling unit, changes that were made in September to deal with an unintended consequence, which was the, the. Do you want me to explain it? Special use permits that had previously been approved by the Board of Adjustment that had renewal period conditions to them. So, a lot of, a lot of them, particularly mobile homes, some others, had five- or 10-year renewal conditions, and they would have to come back for a new hearing with the Board of Adjustment to assure the Board of Adjustment that nothing had changed for the negative there and residents were still okay. And so, in terms, the version that the council went with basically wasn't clear enough in terms of how those particular cases would be handled. And it appeared in the city attorney's reading of it that we would have to tell all those folks when they were coming back for renewals, sorry, you can no longer do that, you got to come in for a rezoning if you want to renew that. And so, when that was explained to the council, we had a solution in mind, and they asked us to go ahead with that alternate solution, which, just so you, for some advanced reading, I'll hand that out to you, which would allow those cases to stay at the Board of Adjustment for renewals as long as they weren't given permanent approval status. They would have to continue to be renewals. So, that text amendment will come to you in the January meeting, too, in hopes of getting it to the city council, first meeting in February, so they can solve that dilemma for some cases that are pending.
And it's just existing ones that had.
And it's just existing ones that had not expired prior to September 5th, 2017. So anyone that had previously been there and they had let it expire and got rid of it, they're, they're not grandfathered in. It's just those that were current through September 5th, 2017. Yeah. And, and then I also left some reading material there. It's, George, you were mentioning Denver. Denver's mentioned in here, I guess, Denver having such a tough affordable housing problem because of its growth and the prices going way up, that they're taking a fresh look at accessory dwellings as a, as a way to kind of provide some options for people.
I saw that article last month. It's a spurious article.
But there, there's some other cities like Vancouver and all that. So just, just for some leisure reading there, so. And with, with that, staff just wants to wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
I have one, I would like for us to at least take a look in one of our work sessions or something like that. There is a clear definitive correlation between housing, development restrictions, and price of housing. I think it would be educational for us to revisit that. I don't know that we've done that, and I don't even know if we've done it before or not. Yeah. But that, I mean, if you're really after affordable housing, and I hear, I hear that occasionally, you've got, you can't increase restrictions. You've got to find a way to decrease restrictions, like giving multifamily by right in HB.
Anything else, any of the board members? On behalf of the board, Paul, let me just wish you and the staff as well a very safe and happy and healthy holiday season. And to our fellow board members, same to you. And Happy New Year. We'll see you in January, I guess. Ms. Smith, have you got anything to say?
Just motion to adjourn and have a holiday.
Okay. Merry Christmas, everybody.